Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Braintree Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 27, 2025, and this is also the annual town meeting. Could everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please remain standing so we can have a moment of silence for our men and women Thank you, please be seated. Okay, we have a pretty big agenda tonight, but I'm going to ask if we can go...
President Ryan, can we do the roll call?
Oh, we'll do the roll call first, there you go. Roll call?
Counsel Erica?
Here.
Counsel Flaherty?
Here.
Counsel Hume?
Here.
Counsel Maglio?
Here.
Counsel Morin?
Here.
Counsel Quilty?
Here.
Counsel Reynolds?
Here.
Counsel Ringus?
Here.
Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I am going to ask if we can go out of order on the agenda and do 25035, the Mayor, Appointment of Frederick T. Viola as Braintree Fire Chief, or take up any action related there, too. Same night action has been requested for this. Does any counselor object to same night action? Okay, hearing that, Mayor Joyce, welcome tonight.
Good evening, good evening, Counsel. Thank you, President Ryan, and Counselors, it is, I'm very honored to be here this morning, or this afternoon, this evening, day goes by very fast, to be bringing forward Frederick Viola as Chief of the Braintree Fire Department. After a comprehensive interview process, which happened while he was working in an acting role in the last couple months of both internal and external candidates, the search committee unanimously selected Acting Chief Viola to serve as our official fire chief, and I think we are very lucky to have him. As we noted in our memo to the Counsel, Chief Viola has over 33 years of dedicated service with the Braintree Fire Department. He's demonstrated exceptional leadership and commitment to our community, to say the least. Over the past year, he's stepped up and his leadership in an interim capacity has not only helped to maintain stability within the fire department, but also enabled a successful rebuilding of the fire department's budget and a creation of a strong team to support those ongoing efforts. Acting Chief Viola began his career in the town of Braintree as a firefighter, EMT, in 1991, and has progressively advanced through the ranks, holding various positions, including Designated Infectious Disease Control Officer, Public Information Officer, Medical Coordinator, Fire Lieutenant, and most recently Acting Fire Chief. His extensive experience in emergency services has equipped him with the skills necessary to lead effectively in high-pressure situations, and we've seen him do that time and time again in the interim role within the last year. In addition to his practical experience, Chief Viola has pursued executive-level leadership training and certifications from prestigious national institutions. Notably, he received his Chief Fire Officer certification from the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management in January 2025, highlighting his true dedication to professional growth and excellence in leadership. I am absolutely confident that Chief Viola will continue to move the Braintree Fire Department forward in the years ahead. I attended a ceremony for police officer promotions earlier this afternoon, and Chief Kahoon had made a comment about leading when no one is looking, and I think that Chief Viola does that through and through. We've seen him do it in an interim position when it was a really tough role to step into and unravel the budget and keep everything moving forward positively. He has done that with flying colors, and I know that's just the tip of the iceberg for where he's going to lead us forward to, and I just wish him the sincerest of luck and appreciation for his willingness to serve us in this role, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Viola, would you like to come up here for one second? The microphone's yours if you'd like to say a few words.
Just quick, but really just thank you. Thanks to the Counsel. It's been quite a journey, quite a year, but I'm confident moving forward that we're going to be better and stronger than we were before. I'm committed to operating more safely and efficiently with transparency and keeping pace with technology and changes in the fire service, which are ever-evolving. But more importantly, the people that supported me all year, including the Mayor herself, who took a chance on a kid from East Braintree, and I appreciate that very much. My fellow firefighters that are around me here today, I'm truly blessed and appreciative of them being here. My friends that are here from all walks of public safety, including the K-9 weirdos, we call them, which is a K-9 group from the South Shore, and all my friends and family, my wife Nancy and my work-wife Hillary Lawless, who has really shaped me up as well, because I was still in the middle of all of this, a disaster, she still helped me get things right. So with that, I just brief, thank you very much, and I'm very honored, I'm very grateful, I'm very humbled by this, and it's just, it's a dream come true for a little kid, and that little kid was me, and it's, it's just, it's awesome. I don't have any other words, so thank you.
Thank you. So... Stay right here. No, we have to get a vote, yeah. So I'd just like to say, I've known Freddie for a long time. I've been a counselor for, I'm in my 18th year, I was a selectman for four years. I remember talking to Freddie down on Wilkins, is it Ava Road, Wilkins?
Wilkins Road.
Wilkins Road, when you lived down there, and I've had a chance to interact with you, and you've always been extremely professional. I think back of you coming in here and showing us, giving the training, showing us the training that your, the firefighters were taking in the town of Braintree. So it's, it's really nice to see an occasion like this where the executive branch has so much faith in you, and then you look and see all the people that work in the fire department also are here on your behalf, supporting you tonight, and that speaks volumes when you have pretty much the whole department show up and for you to be appointed Fire Chief. So I'm very happy for you, it's very deserving, and I wish you the best, Freddie. Thank you very much. Would anybody like, Meredith?
Thank you, and Chief Viola, I just want to add a few words. I know we're going to talk about the budget later, but as the Chair of the Committee of Ways and Means, over the last two years, what you walked into last year and handled with a level of diplomacy, efficiency, thoughtfulness, and downright smarts, and where we are today, I think just doesn't just, you don't just talk about leadership, you demonstrate it every single day, and I can't stress enough to the residents, the work that the Chief has shown over the past year, that we've heard from him multiple times with the finances of the fire department, and I have every confidence in your ability to lead this department into the future, and so grateful for your leadership and tenure, so thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you. So nice to see you here today, and so glad that Braintree is lucky enough to have you as a Chief, but I will certainly echo what I think a lot of Counselors are going to say about the, you entered at a difficult time and confronted a number of different issues with great effectiveness, and most recently produced a budget that is easily the clearest, most comprehensive, and fiscally responsible budget that I have seen from the fire department in a while. So you are to be commended for that, but I also have been, it has also been my pleasure to serve with you on the partnership, where I have seen a level of caring concern and sincere empathy from you on the issues that the partnership aims to confront. And, you know, I know that the fire department has a front row seat to a lot of the damage that drugs and alcohol can do to our community and beyond, and I think that we are so fortunate to have someone with that level of compassion as a leader, in addition to the technical expertise that you bring to the table, so thank you.
Counsel Quilty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say congratulations to you on your well-deserved appointment. Thank you to you and your team, because although the fire department did not benefit from the Proposition Two and a Half override, you worked within your budget, and you and the fire department, your team, kept everybody in Braintree safe. So even with the fires and everything else that was going on, so again, I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you. Counsel Morin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Fred, when we were sitting in the back of town meeting 40 years ago, trying to sneak Bruin scores back and forth when we were supposed to be paying attention, I don't think either one of us thought we'd be here tonight, but, you know, you have just steadily climbed the ladder and improved yourself and improved the department along the way. It's been a pleasure working with you this past year in your interim role. It was also great to work with you on the retirement board, you know, years back under the Mayor Sullivan's administration. Your positive energy is important, your optimism and your willingness to work and listen to other people is a great attribute for a Chief. I think you're well-prepared, and I wish you well going forward. Good luck.
Counsel Ringus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, you know, to oversimplify the process, there's three main buckets that your role contains, and that's the business part of the firefighting, the actual firefighting, and then the creating the culture, and it's very clear that you have strengths in each one of those buckets, and in the ones that you need to work on, you've jumped right in, sort of feet-first into the deep end, and you sort of learned it on the fly. We had a public safety meeting a few weeks back, and it was clear that you were, you know, there to sort of be transparent, to be open, to be honest about some of the difficulties the fire department was facing, but how are you going to sort of embrace those and bring them forward? And that's an important part. I think the other big piece is that it's very clear that you care through the service you brought to the town over these years. From my personal family, a few years back, my dad passed in what ended up being his final seizure, you were one of the firefighters that responded. You checked in immediately later in the day with my mom and with myself, and it's something that meant a lot to me personally, and I wish you the best in this, and I know you're going to embrace this role, so thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Viola, it's got a really nice ring to it. You know, I'm not going to repeat everything that has been accurately said about you by the previous speakers here tonight, but I've known you a long time, and we've had a lot of conversations through the years, and we've shared a lot, and I think that your performance throughout your career absolutely speaks for itself. The completeness of your skill set, your ability to focus, your ability to anticipate, it's come out over this last, how long has it been, a year and a half as the interim? And in that time that you served as the interim chief, you have risen the bar of leadership throughout the entire fire department, and again, you've managed to raise that bar of performance that absolutely speaks for itself. You lead by example, and that's a true leader. I congratulate you.
Thank you. Counsel Maglio?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Chief Viola, the, I'm a newcomer, so I can't talk about 20 or 30 years of knowing you, but I can certainly talk about in my time being more involved in, on the council, and from East Braintree, as you know, there's a lot of beauty there, and there's a lot of infrastructure and potentially dangerous issues between the wildfires and the compressor stations and the industry and Twin Rivers and all of those kinds of things that are right there on the Four River Basin, directly impact the people in East Braintree, and so knowing that you're the person that is overseeing those mechanisms that exist to try and keep us safe, which is the local emergency planning committee, the hazard mitigation committee, all of the follow-up work with Clean Harbors after that fire, all of the emergency preparedness we're doing now as residents for us to meet you and other responders as far as we can to also work on prevention and other safety issues. And I have to tell you that knowing that you're at the helm, I think a lot of us in East Braintree can sleep a little better at night, and I really thank you for that. Best of luck to you in this role.
Thank you. Counsel Hume?
Thank you, Mr. President. Soon to be Chief Viola, because we haven't voted, but I'm sure based on what everybody said, it's going to happen. You stepped into this role, and as the previous Counsel Maglio stated, it was a very difficult year, and you handled it so well with such leadership and knowledge, and when you didn't know something, I know you reached out, and Hillary, from all of what I hear, has been a great addition to the team, everything I've seen, yeah. Great addition to the team, but you can't be a good leader without your team, and it speaks volumes that all the men and women here for fire and police are here to support you, because they're here for the Braintree residents, that speaks volumes, so thank you to all of you. I know you're going to be successful, because everybody who's here couldn't be here tonight, so best of luck and congratulations.
Thank you.
I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention the members of the Firefighters Association and what they did back in May to assist me in moving forward, too. Again, that's part of that support network that I talked about, but thank you for the accolades, but they deserve some as well for putting up with it.
Okay, so we're going to take a vote, and then I'm going to call for a five-minute recess so we can get all the folks here that are here tonight supporting you out back on the road in case there's a fire, and then we'll get back in session, so do we have a motion on this matter?
Mr. President, on request of her honor, Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, in accordance with Sections 2-10 and 3-3 of the Town Charter, I move to approve the appointment of Frederick T. Viola as the Braintree Fire Chief.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations. All right, do we have... Do we have a motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I always say Braintree is for everyone, but Braintree cannot really be for everyone until everyone can do the things that there are to do in Braintree. And that includes people who are on the autism spectrum and who, any other sort of neurotypical issue. So, I'm very grateful that you're bringing your perspective, your expertise to this role, and I know that Braintree is going to benefit a lot from it, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Barica?
Yeah, I would like to echo, thank you so much for volunteering. I know I say this with all of our board and commission appointments, but I think it's really important for residents to know that all of the folks who serve on our boards and commissions are volunteers. They're giving their time, their talent, and it means so much to Braintree, and I think especially the Commission on Disabilities. I'm also the parent of a disabled child, and having a parent's perspective is hugely important, and I'm very appreciative that you'll bring that to the board. Disability affects pretty much everyone, whether it's through old age, injury, disease, it could be temporary or it could be permanent, and the work of the Commission on Disabilities, I think it can be really expansive and impactful, and I'm very grateful that you'll be serving in this capacity, and I'm happy to support your appointment tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maglio?
Thank you very much. I am very excited to welcome you and to support your nomination tonight. I think that the bringing information and volunteerism to the commission is so important, because it is, when there's access and inclusion for everyone, it enriches the experience for everyone as well. And to be able to know and work toward everyone being able to receive that kind of justice, really, is pretty huge and very significant to me, so I appreciate it, and I congratulate you, and I will definitely support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? I just want to say good luck. It's a great thing that you're volunteering to be on the board. I think it's one of the things that makes Braintree a great town, that we have so many good people volunteer and make the town the best that it can be. My son has Asperger's, and my son's a little older now, I know, I'm a little older, so I have, my son's a little older, and I remember when he was in middle school, you know, a lot of people didn't know what Asperger's was, and it was hard for him, and it's nice to see that we're doing the work that you're going to do on the board, so thank you so much. It's an honorable thing to serve your community, thank you.
And it's also just, you know, it's not just about the individuals with disabilities, right? It is about their family, their support network, their loved ones, right, their therapists, and, you know, it is a very expansive community that, you know, is sometimes silent, you know, so just being an advocate and giving more of a voice to the families, you know, that kind of have to work through, you know, these challenges, barriers, you know, they didn't give you a playbook, right, and how things are supposed to go, everybody's an individual, so it's an honor.
So, thank you. So, do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I would move upon the request of her honor, Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, in accordance with Sections 2-10 and 3-3 of the Town Charter, approve the appointment of Kelly Ormsby to the Commission on Disabilities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, that's unanimous, congratulations. Another request we have for same-night action is 25023, the mayor, appointment to the Weymouth Braintree Recreation Conservation District Board of Directors, Kathleen Bowes, or take up any action related there, too. Okay. Doesn't, it's not same-night action, but we're going to take it out of order nonetheless. So, would anybody from the mayor's office like to talk on this? Mayor Joyce?
You're taking stuff out of order, I'm having a hard time keeping track of where you're at.
Yeah, me too. You're not the only one.
Good evening. Very happy to be reappointing, Ms. Kathy Bowes, Ms. Bowes, she'll always be Ms. Bowes to me, she taught my kiddos at Hollis, so, but backed her work, she works, has been a board member for the Pond Meadow Park Commission, so she's done great work and wants to continue serving, so we're very happy to have her in that role, and I know she is here in the back, so.
Kathy, do you want to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, how are you? I'm good, back again. Thank you for your kind words, and being on the commission around Pond Meadow with Braintree and Weymouth is just, you know, a wonderful way to give back to our town, our towns, actually. It's something my dad did for many years, and I wanted to carry on his legacy. It's a beautiful gem, 320 acres of, you know, meadow and marsh and many habitats, and we're doing a lot of great work there to kind of bring it back to life, and I appreciate your support of our budget, we have a lot of things to fix coming up, so, and thank you to Counselor Flaherty for her work getting rid of the invasive species there, so I'm kind of happy, proud to be part of this board.
Thank you. Any Counselor Hume?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been happy for years, Catherine, her entire family, her husband, her son, her daughter, fully engrossed in the Braintree community, and I didn't realize your father was on this board until we got our documents, so, and I knew your brothers, so that is a true testament to your commitment to the town of Braintree. I was actually at Pond Meadow earlier tonight, and the improvements are incredible. If you haven't been there, there's so many, like, a lot of the paths have been expanded, a lot of the foliage has been cut back and whatnot, so great job, I'm fully supporting this, I know you've done a great job, will continue to, so thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathy, we're really fortunate to have you on this board, obviously with your history, your advocacy for that open space, it truly is a beautiful place, and it's an opportunity for you to represent Braintree in this co-community project for us, and I know that there's a very important, some things that we need to work on down there, and I know you're going to be an advocate for that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty?
I have been to Pond Meadow also recently, and there's so much happening right now, and what is amazing to me is that after a long period of time where so many people used the park so regularly to walk, to jog, to stroll their baby around the water, to enjoy the foliage in the fall, to, you know, sit on a bench and take it in, because it's paved, so it is accessible, I think after a long period of time of just people enjoying it, now we're making some investment in it. And I'm so grateful for your leadership during this time when we're giving the park like a little bit of resources, because they can make a little bit go a long way, so thank you so much for your leadership in that area.
Thank you. Just want to say Kathy, thank you for serving on the board, I've known Kathy for a little bit, I met her through her husband, I don't know if everybody remembers Tom Bowes sitting back there. Tom was a counselor for us, he was an excellent counselor in the town, he did a great job, and as Shannon mentioned, the Bowes family is very involved with the community. Tom, your son Tom was here earlier, supporting the new fire chief, he's a firefighter, and your family is the definition of being involved with their community to make it a better place to live, so I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion for this?
Mr. President, I would move upon a request of her honor, Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, in accordance with Sections 2-10 and 3-3 of the Town Charter, approve the appointment of Kathleen Bowes to the Commission on Disabilities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, that's unanimous, congratulations. Another request we have for same-night action is 25023, the mayor, appointment to the Weymouth Braintree Recreation Conservation District Board of Directors, Kathleen Bowes, or take up any action related there, too. Okay. Doesn't, it's not same-night action, but we're going to take it out of order nonetheless. So, would anybody from the mayor's office like to talk on this? Mayor Joyce?
You're taking stuff out of order, I'm having a hard time keeping track of where you're at.
Yeah, me too. You're not the only one.
Good evening, I'm very happy to be reappointing, Ms. Kathy Bowes, Ms. Bowes, she'll always be Ms. Bowes to me, she taught my kiddos at Hollis, so, but backed her work, she works, has been a board member for the Pond Meadow Park Commission, so she's done great work and wants to continue serving, so we're very happy to have her in that role, and I know she is here in the back, so.
Kathy, do you want to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, how are you? I'm good, back again. Thank you for your kind words, and being on the commission around Pond Meadow with Braintree and Weymouth is just, you know, a wonderful way to give back to our town, our towns, actually. It's something my dad did for many years, and I wanted to carry on his legacy. It's a beautiful gem, 320 acres of, you know, meadow and marsh and many habitats, and we're doing a lot of great work there to kind of bring it back to life, and I appreciate your support of our budget, we have a lot of things to fix coming up, so, and thank you to Counselor Flaherty for her work getting rid of the invasive species there, so I'm kind of happy, proud to be part of this board.
Thank you. Any Counselor Hume?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been happy for years, Catherine, her entire family, her husband, her son, her daughter, fully engrossed in the Braintree community, and I didn't realize your father was on this board until we got our documents, so, and I knew your brothers, so that is a true testament to your commitment to the town of Braintree. I was actually at Pond Meadow earlier tonight, and the improvements are incredible. If you haven't been there, there's so many, like, a lot of the paths have been expanded, a lot of the foliage has been cut back and whatnot, so great job, I'm fully supporting this, I know you've done a great job, will continue to, so thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathy, we're really fortunate to have you on this board, obviously with your history, your advocacy for that open space, it truly is a beautiful place, and it's an opportunity for you to represent Braintree in this co-community project for us, and I know that there's a very important, some things that we need to work on down there, and I know you're going to be an advocate for that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty?
I have been to Pond Meadow also recently, and there's so much happening right now, and what is amazing to me is that after a long period of time where so many people used the park so regularly to walk, to jog, to stroll their baby around the water, to enjoy the foliage in the fall, to, you know, sit on a bench and take it in, because it's paved, so it is accessible, I think after a long period of time of just people enjoying it, now we're making some investment in it, and I'm so grateful for your leadership during this time when we're giving the park like a little bit of resources, because they can make a little bit go a long way, so thank you so much for your leadership in that area.
Thank you. Just want to say Kathy, thank you for serving on the board, I've known Kathy for a little bit, I met her through her husband, I don't know if everybody remembers Tom Bowes sitting back there. Tom was a counselor for us, he was an excellent counselor in the town, he did a great job, and as Shannon mentioned, the Bowes family is very involved with the community. Tom, your son Tom was here earlier, supporting the new fire chief, he's a firefighter, and your family is the definition of being involved with their community to make it a better place to live, so I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion for this?
Mr. President, I would move upon a request of her honor, Mayor Joyce, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, in accordance with Sections 2-10 and 3-3 of the Town Charter, approve the appointment of Kathleen Bowes to the Weymouth Braintree Recreation Conservation District Board of Directors.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, that's unanimous, congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have another request for same-night action, and it's for 25031, 25032, 25033, and 25034 for appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Same-night action has been requested, do any counselors have any objection to same-night action? Counselor Hume?
President, I do on all of them, reason being is the Zoning Board of Appeals is such a crucial and vital board in this community, four brand-new members, there are so many things coming before this board that I think, I know, the council specifically Ways and Means needs the opportunity to do their due diligence and go through these candidates that the mayor has put before us, so for those reasons, I'm objecting to same-night action.
Okay, so we are not going to be discussing this right now, we will be later on, on the agenda referring this to the Committee on Ways and Means under New Business, so that's, that's that for now. Okay, so back to the agenda, we're going to go back to announcements. Counselor Maglio, do you have any announcements?
Oh, thank you. As a matter of fact, I do. So, on this Friday, there is, oh, I'm checking the date here, this Friday, May 30th, at 9:00 a.m., there will be a flag raising in front of Town Hall to celebrate the kickoff of Pride Month, and on Sunday, there will be a pride celebration at Watson Park on Gordon Road from 10:00 to 2:00, celebrating through a family fun day of, I'm sorry, did you say, did you, oh, sorry, did I have the wrong date? Okay. So, Friday is the flag raising, and Sunday is the celebration of pride.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very much. Counselor Barica?
Thank you very much, President Ryan. I have two announcements, excuse me, one is from the Sheriff's Department, the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department will be hosting a Recovery Fest, it's a free event, there's live music, games, food, this is going to be Saturday, June 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. up at the Braintree Sheriff's Complex, it's 2015 Washington Street, looks like it's going to be a lot of fun, there'll be cornhole, a zip line, so please come on out and support, support our recovery community for that. Excuse me. The second announcement I have comes from our Thayer Public Library, the Teen Advisory Group, they're presenting their annual murder mystery party, sounds like a lot of fun, it's going to be Thursday, May 29th, the theme is The Enchanted Forest. You do need to register, so please go to Thayer Public Library, if you want to register, you can do it by email, or you can give them a call. Check-in will begin at 6:00 p.m., doors will close at 6:30 p.m., and again, that's this Thursday, May 29th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. It is with great pleasure that I can announce that the Braintree Department of Elder Affairs is teaming up with the Thayer Public Library to present a program called Music and Dementia, and, you know, it's just not, there are not very many dementia patients with their own TikTok accounts, but never say never, because Elaine Lieber is not only a dementia patient and a pianist, but she is a dementia patient and a pianist with her own TikTok account, and her mother, Dr. Randy Lieber, is going to pay a visit to the Braintree Senior Center on Tuesday, June 24th at 4:00 p.m. to talk with anybody who's interested about how music can play a role in bringing joy and meaning to the relationship of a person who is experiencing dementia with their family members as they see them through that journey. And so, I think that this has to, there are not a lot of graces extended to people who are, have a family member struggling with dementia, but I think music is an area where people can still connect in a real and sincere way, and learning about it at this event is a great opportunity for anybody who's interested, so, 4:00 o'clock on June 24th at the Braintree Senior Center, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. I'd like to say a quick, early congratulations to all our graduating seniors, they are wrapping up their classes this week, if you happened to be up to high school this morning, you would have seen the annual bike parade, all the kids dressed in yellow riding their bikes around, at least two of them dressed as bananas, so it's always a good time, and these kids have their future ahead of them, so. And her mother, Dr. Randy Lieber, is going to pay a visit to the Braintree Senior Center on Tuesday, June 24th, at 4:00 p.m. to talk with anybody who's interested about how music can play a role in bringing joy and meaning to the relationship of a person who is experiencing dementia with their family members as they see them through that journey. And so I think that this has to, there are not a lot of graces extended to people who are, have a family member struggling with dementia. But I think music is an area where people can still connect in a real and sincere way. And learning about it at this event is a great opportunity for anybody who's interested. So, 4 o'clock on June 24th at the Braintree Senior Center. Thanks.
A quick, early congratulations to all our graduating seniors. They are wrapping up their classes this week. If you happened to be up at the high school this morning, you would have seen the annual bike parade. All the kids dressed in yellow, riding their bikes around. At least two of them dress as bananas. So it's, it's always a good time, and these kids have their future ahead of them. So, and early congratulations to them on their upcoming graduation.
Thank you. Councilor Quilty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to make note that May is Amyotrophic Lateral Sclerosis Month. And I just lost my place. Sorry, guys. Anyway, so I have a constituent who asked me to read a letter that he wrote to me, and I'm going to read it, you guys. Dear Councilor Quilty, as your constituent and someone impacted by ALS, I am writing to you on behalf of the ALS Association to request that you recognize May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month. Amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a devastating and fatal neurodegenerative condition. It progressively destroys motor neurons, leading to complete paralysis, and in most cases, death within five years of diagnosis. There is no cure. Military veterans are disproportionately affected by ALS. Multiple studies show that they are significantly more likely to develop and die from the disease than the general population. While their minds remain sharp, people living with ALS lose the ability to walk, to talk, to eat, and eventually to breathe. As their independence fades, they often rely entirely on caregivers in advanced stages for round-the-clock care, and it becomes essential. To truly confront ALS, we must raise awareness and ensure policies reflect the urgent needs of those living with the disease. Increased advocacy and legislative support are critical to advancing research, easing the burden on families, and ultimately finding a cure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Quilty. Any other announcements from the council? Okay. Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 1st, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Now we're on to old business, 25018, the mayor FY26 operating budget, or take up any action related there, too. We need, this is a public hearing, and we need a motion to open the public hearing for 25018.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna refer to Councilor, Councilor Baraka, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on order 25018.
Thank you very much, President Ryan. The Committee of Ways and Means met throughout the month of May, and I'd like to thank my, the committee members, along with Clerk of the Council Susan Semino and Director of Finance Mike Esmond, who joined us every single night throughout the month. The committee is sending the entire budget to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Joyce, welcome again.
Good evening. Good evening, Council President Ryan and councilors. I also want to echo thanks to not only just the Committee of Ways and Means, which spent many nights in the month of May, meeting to go over the budget in very, in a lot of detail. But I also want to extend thanks to all of my department heads that worked over the last month and in the months leading up to budget season, answering questions that my, that we had, and then, again, answering follow-up questions that Ways and Means had, providing additional support and information as necessary. And of course, a very big thank you to the ultimate master conductor of it all, our Finance Director, Mike Esmond. Just a great effort by everyone, so just very much want to thank you for that. And I did want to touch base in my initial presentation of the budget. There were a couple items I wanted to reiterate again this evening, and I'll try to be brief. So, the town's fiscal year 2026 budget will begin on July 1st, 2025. We're very proud that the budget that we had presented and is before the council tonight is a budget that stopped the cycle of cutting. For the first time in many years, we were starting to talk about what, we didn't lead our planning with what we can live without. Granted, there's a lot that we want to add and a lot more that we want to do, and we have our sights set on that for the years ahead. But we were able to preserve what we had in fiscal year '25. And as a reminder, you know, we worked really hard to put forward a budget that talked more to what our values are as a community. The budget presented for fiscal year '26 strongly supports education excellence for our students, as 60% of our budget is spent on school-related activities. It also promotes sustainability for our Braintree economy. It invests in safe and vibrant communities. We continue to invest in the strengthening of our communications with the new communications team through the mayor's office, putting out the O218 four-week newsletter and our weekly snapshot, and we look forward to expanding on that effort in the next year. It also, our budget maintains and improves our public infrastructure. There are several roadway investments and infrastructure upgrades that we plan on doing in the next year. And most importantly, I think, it provides forward-looking planning and projections to ensure long-term, long-term fiscal stability and resiliency, empowering not only our residents, but also our community leaders and decision-makers like yourselves to have a perspective on what might be coming in the years ahead, some of the challenges that we have, and also some of the opportunities. I'm very proud that the budget is stable, on track, with the budget that we presented last year, and it preserves services. With the successful override last June, my team and Braintree voters have placed Braintree on a sustainable and upward path towards fiscal resiliency. We're out of the woods, sure. Are we out of the woods yet? No, but we're getting there. In the years ahead, as a reminder, we're gonna be increasingly mindful of the mounting costs associated with running our government, like our workforce, our pension liabilities, and various skyrocketing, quite frankly, insurances. While also contending with anticipated limited growth to our local aid, potentially sluggish economic growth in new development, even on our local aid, we had assumed 1% growth there, and we were seeing, you know, about a tenth of that coming forward. And unfortunately, affording the Braintree Public School System will be our biggest challenge. They are 60% of our budget, 50% of our operating. One that we're taking very seriously, we're taking it head-on, to ensure that we don't have to be constantly talking about potential cuts every year. In the last month, incoming Superintendent Tim McDonald and I have spent several nights visiting as many PTOs as we can and talking about, you know, trying to have an honest conversation with, with parents and educators about the school's budget and what the town's resources are. We continue to talk about how challenging staying at the 3.5% growth is for the district, which is what we had targeted. The school committee, as many of you are aware, but maybe some folks in the audience haven't been able to follow, the school committee last, in the spring, went so far as considering consolidating elementary school buildings to realize efficiencies and savings of upwards of $500,000. And while I did agree that I think movement is needed in this way to consolidate buildings, realize efficiencies with declining enrollment, I also appreciate how unexpected this is for so many people. And in our conversations amongst the PTO members, everyone just wants to have a direction, and we want to work on providing clarity for that. So we are currently working on a master planning effort for the schools, and we're sharing it out with groups. This effort's gonna be kicking off this summer and continuing for like, for likely at least a year. So just raising awareness to that effort. And as I said last year, I'll reiterate, reiterate it again tonight, for my administration, fiscal stability will be a functional obsession. With the successful override last year, we continue to discuss and challenge each other with what living within the town's resources means. And then as residents, leaders, anyone with a hope for a town, for Braintree, we have to get out there and advocate to bring more resources into our community. Thank you, this, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Joyce. Usually I'd ask if the councilors want to speak, but I'm gonna ask if there's any members of the general public that would like to speak first. Okay, seeing none. Is there any councilors that would like to speak? Councilor Warren?
President, I want to thank the, my fellow members of the Ways and Means Committee, Chair Meredith Baraka, for her attention to detail, her punctuality, and her, she just kept us on track every night, which is not easy, an easy task. We tend to go off the rails now and then, but we try to, we try to make it an educational experience. I also want to thank Finance Director Mike Esmond for his exceptional work. He provided the Ways and Means Committee with thorough and timely and accurate information. Thank you all, to all the department heads for their patience and their professionalism. And thank you to the mayor for presenting this budget. Perhaps there's no clearer expression of a community's priorities than a municipal budget. I believe this budget reflects Braintree's priorities quite well. It's a prudent and responsible budget that allows services to be provided in the manner to which Braintree has been accustomed. Our budget prioritizes the needs of, the educational needs of our children. It keeps our residents safe and healthy, our streets paved, our neighborhoods clean, and supports cultural and recreational facilities throughout our town. This budget isn't perfect, but it is a step forward, a substantial measure of positive progress from where we were last year. We still need to do more to provide tax relief to our seniors. We need to have meaningful and informed dialogue about the future of elementary education in Braintree and how we will pay for it. But because we have corrected our course and become more financially stable, we have the time and opportunity to make a well-reasoned decision. I wish to commend the mayor on her leadership in stabilizing Braintree's finances, and I will support all the motions relating to the FY26 budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Warren. Any other councilors like to speak? Councilor Flaherty?
Thank you. First of all, I'd really like to thank everyone who's here today, and those of you who are watching from home. This process, the review of the budget, is one of the most important things that the council does over the course of the year, because the process offers residents an unfiltered, comprehensive look at all of our town's financial resources, where they come from and how the money gets spent. Over the course of nine meetings with the Ways and Means Committee, we have looked at every nook and cranny of this budget, and I am confident that it demonstrates careful stewardship of the resources we have, as well as a transparent forecast for what things are gonna look like in the very near future. So here's a summary of the main points as I see them. First of all, for the first time in several years, Braintree has been able to balance the budget without requiring cuts to the existing services we have in any department. And while we're not able to make up any of the cuts that we had to make last year, or the year before that, and so on, the passage of the override allows us to maintain essential services, keep our commitments to the community, and fund the priorities we all care about: public safety, schools, facilities, roads, and community programs of all kinds. Plenty of community, plenty of communities wish they were in our shoes. Second, this budget is honest. It represents the best accounting I've seen so far of the actual costs of overtime, and I am personally very grateful to see us contending with these costs now, rather than depending on a budget supplemental to be filed later in the year. Third, our budget is balanced, has to be, by law. But it's important for people to realize how narrowly balanced it really is. Our library, for example, is squeaking by with exactly $156 of funding above the state requirement for library certification. That's how fragile our solvency is, and it can require big and often unwelcome trade-offs. The high school, for example, is considering the expansion of a really popular business program. Kids are, there's a high demand for it. Kids want to take business classes. But in order to expand the program so more kids can take it, Braintree would have to take another position away from another department. So since the science department is anticipating a retirement this year, that's the choice that our schools have to make. Do we want to keep the number of teachers we have in science, or do we want to shrink that so we can grow this vibrant and wonderful program in business? That's, those are the kinds of choices that our superintendent and our school committee have to make all the time, because our resources are tight. So... Number four, despite the increase in our local property taxes that we voted for with the override, this budget relies heavily on growing fees for services, especially trash, but school bus transportation, student athletic fees, and full-day kindergarten tuition fees. These fees disproportionately impact families with school-aged children, and in my opinion, they undermine the commitment that Braintree makes to residents as a town for families. Number five is the last one. This budget warns us that even in the best-case scenario, a gap between our revenue and our costs begins to grow next fiscal year. It starts at only $230,000, which is a solvable problem through the use of free cash or by drawing more heavily on, from the override stabilization fund that we voted to create. But the year after that, the gap opens to $2.1 million, and the year after that, it goes to $4.2 million. If the collective bargaining contracts that are now being negotiated include COLAs greater than 2%, those gaps grow by a lot. This is the challenge of the near future, and it's something Braintree needs to talk about openly and extensively, because the numbers are clear. But that doesn't mean that Braintree doesn't have choices. The numbers that I've quoted don't assume any changes in revenue other than the standard 2.5% property tax increase. And since our costs are not mysterious, and our revenue is not mysterious, our choices are incredibly clear. To keep our budget balanced in the future, we can make additional cuts to the services we have, or we can grow our revenue. To grow our revenue, we can either increase the property taxes we pay, raise our fees, or invite new growth. There are trade-offs for each choice. But whatever we do, we should deliberate about our, we should be deliberate about our path and forthright about the trade-offs we're making, because otherwise, we are just fooling ourselves. I think this budget represents a very frugal and appropriate stewardship of the resources we have, and I'm happy to support it tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Baraka?
Thank you, President Ryan. And I'll echo the sentiments of some of my colleagues, but I do think some of it does bear repeating. I would like to commend the mayor and her team, because there are so many components of this $175.7 million budget, which the town should take a lot of pride in. I encourage residents to take a look through the budget book. It's, then, there's a new format. It's easy to understand. You can review every department's goals and the metrics by which they will measure progress. This is a real improvement in transparency over prior years, because it's very accessible and in plain language. The successful override in 2024, as both the mayor and Councilor Flaherty mentioned, continues to pay tangible benefits for Braintree, so thank you to Braintree voters. It has allowed us to maintain the same level of services across all departments. So it's really important, we should celebrate. This year's budget is a milestone, because for the first time in many years, we have avoided new service and personnel reductions. And yet, the work continues to improve our financial solvency and ensure residents are provided with the high quality of life that they, we all deserve. As our town auditor stated, quote, "No additional funding is available, and the successful override is not an end-all solve for potential budgetary challenges still to come," end quote. So I think it's important that residents know that collectively, we have some significant financial challenges, and I'd like to read some of them out. This year, $500,000 is being spent from a prior appropriation to close a school budget gap. $786,000 will be spent annually for the next 15 years to pay for the wrongful conviction settlement of Frederick Boichel. As Councilor Flaherty mentioned, the library funding is only $156 above the minimum required to maintain accreditation, and we all know how important the library is to our community. And again, as we learned from the school department, and thank you, Councilor Flaherty, for mentioning it earlier, they're being forced to choose between offering a business or a science class at the high school, because we simply cannot afford both. And Braintree families are burdened with an unsustainable and frankly unfair de facto school tax in the form of fees. $3,800 if you have a kindergartner, $720 if you need school bus transportation, and if you have two kids at the high school who are three-season athletes like so many, up to $2,400 per family for a year of athletic fees. If maxed out, the public school fees could amount to a whopping $7,000 per family per year. But even alone, each, each places a burden on Braintree families seeking a high-quality public school education. school education for their kids. Without thoughtful and dynamic change, we risk making Braintree unaffordable for current and future residents. The good news is I know we have the talent, the fortitude, the imagination, and therefore the ability to guide Braintree to a vibrant and thriving future. And I believe we are already well on our way to financial stability, combining measured spending along with new projects of all types being permitted or in the pipeline. But it will take a community-wide effort to continue this trajectory. And right now, that means making do with current service levels and also offering support for new sources of reliable recurring revenue. I believe a growing community is a sign of prosperity. As we welcome new businesses, new ideas, and new residents over time, I believe we will be able to build back the services we've lost and strive to add new programs and amenities that we deserve. Again, I want to thank Mayor Joyce and her team, and I will be fully supporting all aspects of the budget this evening. Thank you, President Ryan.
Thank you. Councilor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and her team, particularly Mike Esmond, and also the department heads and all of their teams, their financial teams that they had taken with them. This is a very lean budget, but it's a realistic budget. As some of these previous speakers have cited, some of the problems that we're facing, some of the challenges that we're facing. We need to address the high school fees. We need to replace those with real revenues. We need to incorporate a tax relief, more meaningful tax relief for our veterans through the State's HERO Act. That's something that I will be working on to work with the mayor's office on that. We need to improve our rainy day fund, or otherwise known as our free cash fund. A lot of folks need to realize that when our free cash is below 10% of what our operating budget is, it has a detrimental impact on our ability to borrow money. We are then subject to higher interest costs that tear into any kind of fee or any kind of revenues that we can use for more meaningful services. We are really close to the bone with this budget, but it's a very good budget in the sense that it's moving in the right direction after a few years of going in the wrong direction. A lot of the points that the previous councilors have made about what it is that we need to do as a community and some of the tough choices that we need to make as a community, we need to hear from the people, and we need to hear from people who will also prevent, or who also present recommended solutions because there are a lot of problems out there that we have to face. But, you know, many hands make the work lighter. We must continue to balance on our limited revenues versus our unrelenting annual operating cost increases. These are just really fundamental things that we, as regular citizens, need to understand that if we're going to effectively manage our community, we need to understand that every action we take, that there's going to be an opposite reaction to it. What are we all out for? For a balance between equality of life and our ability to raise revenues. I think Braintree is in a unique position right now that we can accomplish that as a community. So I also want to thank the Ways and Means Chairwoman, Berwick. She did a fantastic job this year. And the rest of my colleagues on the Ways and Means Committee. Really do appreciate their insights, their unique skills that they bring to the table. So it was a pleasure to be working with all of you, and I look forward to a successful year ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Maglio.
Thank you very much. As the, rounding out the members of the Ways and Means Committee, I will just speak very briefly about the FY26 budget. It isn't just the numbers on a spreadsheet. It's the blueprint for our community's future. It connects everyday concerns to larger, to the larger financial picture. We discussed everything from potholes to playgrounds to weed-eating goats to business development efforts to addressing blight. Every line item represents a choice about the kind of community we want to be. The more that people tune in and pay attention to these kinds of issues, the less surprised and taken aback people are when they see that these choices are being made. And the best way to make sure that these choices reflect your priorities is to plug in all along the way rather than wait to find out at the end and perhaps have wanted to have provided alternative views. The last piece also, I want to echo my colleagues on the committee in terms of our meetings and the sense of camaraderie and the collaboration with the mayor's office, with the council. It was, I won't go so far as to say it was a pleasure, but I will say that if we're going to spend most of May going over a budget, this is exactly where I'd want to do it, with a budget coming from Mr. Esmond and the mayor's office. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other councilors like to speak or any comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you to Mayor Joyce. She came into office, and there was a big budget problem in the town of Braintree, to say the least, and I've watched her and her staff work very diligently and a transparent way, and I want to commend them for a job well done, and thank you. Want to thank all the department heads that are here tonight, all the department heads that took the time to meet with the Ways and Means Committee. Appreciate that, and thank you for being here. And I also want to thank the Ways and Means Committee. I could see May also being Ways and Means Month in the town of Braintree as well. It's a long month, May, for the people on the Ways and Means and its work that's critical, and it's a job well done, so thank you so much. Okay. So we are still in the public hearing. We did not have any comments from the general public. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 25018.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have a motion on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would first move that the town of Braintree raise and appropriate the sum of $175,664,045 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's several departments and programs for the fiscal year 2026, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes and are subject to the source of funding for said expenditures as outlined on Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $112,000 be transferred from golf course receipts, the sum of $300,000 be transferred from the overlay surplus account, the sum of $25,000 be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots, the sum of $1,087,000 be transferred from water and soil receipts, the sum of $62,000 be transferred from stormwater receipts, and the balance to be raised in the tax levy, which shall include $2,762,245 from the debt exclusion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Two, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $2,281,570 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's golf course and related programs for the fiscal year 2026, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $2,281,570 be raised in the golf course receipts.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, three, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $23,905,194 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's water and soil division and related programs for the fiscal year 2026, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $146,000 be transferred from the water soil rehabilitation fund and the balance of $23,759,194 be raised in the water and soil receipts.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, number four, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $1,624,405 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's stormwater division and related programs for the fiscal year 2026, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on Exhibit A, specifically in that the sum of $1,624,405 be raised in the stormwater receipts.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, five, that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $630,175 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's cable television, public education, and government access and related programs for the fiscal year 2026, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on Exhibit A, specifically in that the sum of $630,175 be raised in the cable franchise fees receipts.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, six, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, the town is authorized to incur a liability in excess of the amount appropriated for snow and ice for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, seven, that a sum of $20,000 be transferred from the stormwater fund fiscal year 2024 certified free cash for a reserve for the purposes of funding drain maintenance during fiscal year 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, eight, that the sum of $64,771 be transferred from the stormwater fund fiscal year 2024 certified free cash to the general fund for the purposes of funding stormwater fund debt service expenses during fiscal year 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, the sum of up to $500,000 be transferred from the Human Resources Administration payroll restructuring reserve to the Fund 0003 School Operating Fund, provided that such transfer shall only be completed upon the written approval of the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, ten, that a sum of $600,000 be transferred from the sale of real estate fund 3502 to the general fund to reimburse the general fund for debt service for the East Middle School renovation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, eleven, that a sum of $600,000 be transferred from the general fund to the Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, number twelve, that a sum of $461,575 be transferred from Fund 4144 Catastrophic Protection to Fund E344 Health Insurance Trust Fund.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Councilor Ringus, for all that reading. So the next item on the agenda is 25019, Mayor, FY26 budget, Community Preservation Committee will take up any action related thereto. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. I'm going to refer to Councilor Berwick, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on Order 25019.
Thank you, President Ryan. This budget item was part of our review over the month of May, and we are sending it to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the mayor's staff that would like to speak on this?
Good evening, President Ryan, and members of the council. Mike Esmond, Finance Director. Just very, very briefly, the five motions that are in front of the council tonight are adopted essentially every year and essentially will appropriate the funds anticipated and projected for the Community Preservation Act funds that will be received in fiscal '26. So in quickly, you can see the first three motions will distribute $150,000 to the Community Housing Reserve, to the Open Space Reserve, and to the Historic Resources Reserve. Additionally, in motion four, $740,000 will be appropriated to the budgeted reserve, the largest fund of the CPA funds that the town has and has established. And then finally, $62,000, just under $63,000, will be transferred for the purposes of administration of the CPA funds in fiscal '26.
Thank you. Would any council member like to speak on Order 25019? Councilor Berwick.
Thank you, President Ryan. Just as residents are aware, the Community Preservation Act money is by 1% sourced on all of our property taxes, business and residential, and that money is set aside only for use for open space creation, historic preservation, affordable housing. So I know sometimes people ask about how can we afford a certain sports thing or field or historic preservation, and that money is coming out of very specific buckets that can't be used for other projects. So I worked on this many years ago, and it's a great way to fund those nice-to-haves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Berwick. Any other councilors like to speak on this matter? Okay, is there anyone from the general public that would like to speak on Order 25019? Okay, hearing none. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus with the motions.
Mr. President, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Housing Reserve for acquisition, creation, preservation, or support of community housing or the rehabilitation or restoration of community housing that is acquired or created as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Open Space Reserve for the acquisition, creation, or preservation of open space or the rehabilitation or restoration of open space that is acquired or created as provided in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Historic Resources Reserve for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, or restoration of historic resources as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $743,884 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Councilor Ringus.
Mr. President, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of $62,836 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the fiscal year 2026 Administrative Operating Fund as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and by the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you for reading those motions, Councilor Ringus. The next item on the agenda is 25020, Mayor, FY26 budget, continuation of revolving funds or take up any action related thereto. This requires a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. The public meeting's now open. I'm going to refer to Councilor Berwick, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on Order 25020.
Thank you, President Ryan. Again, this motion was also reviewed by the committee during the month of May, and it comes to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would anyone from the mayor's staff like to speak on 25020?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly again, the motion that's before you represents the motion that's adopted with the budget package every year. There's a number of revolving funds that are listed here. Just would call your attention to the last one, the Building Maintenance Fund. There's adjoining motions that'll be discussed shortly that relate to that. If you recognize that as a new fund, and as you can see, its fund number is TBD since it's not fully established yet. The spending limits that are indicated here are the up-to amounts. These are the amounts of revenue that can be expended, whether the revenues received in fiscal '26 or prior year. in fiscal '26 or prior year balances. The department that's indicated can spend no more than those amounts, but in most cases they provide a supplemental benefit to the operations of the department outside of their general fund appropriations, and have consistently played an important role in incentivizing departments to get revenue that might otherwise not be available to the town. So, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any counselors have any questions, comments? Okay, any members of the general public have any questions or comments or like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none, with that, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Counsel Ringus with the motion.
Mr. President, I would move that in accordance with provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the General Laws, the town of Braintree hereby sets the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2026, beginning on July 1, 2025, for the revolving funds established by ordinance for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers as follow: From Elder Affairs Service and Activities Fund 3002, from the Department of Public Affairs, the spending limit being $30,000; From Immunization Fund 3001, from the Board of Health, a spending limit of $50,000; From Library Materials Fund 3006, under the Library Trustees, a spending limit of $45,000; From the Library Room Rental Fund 3007, from Library Trustees, a spending limit of $5,000; From Recycling Materials Fund 3004, under the Mayor in conjunction with the Recycling Coordinator, a spending limit of $4,800; Under Household Hazardous Waste Fund 3005, under the Mayor in conjunction with the Recycling Coordinator, a spending limit of $50,000; Full Day Kindergarten Fund 1008, under the Office of the School Committee, a spending limit of $1,100,000; Under the Pro Shop Fund 7103, the Mayor in conjunction with the Director of Golf Operations, a sum of $300,000, a spending limit of $300,000; From Food and Beverage Fund 7104, the Mayor in conjunction with the Director of Golf Operations, a spending limit of $700,000; From the School Bus Fund 2011, under the School Committee, a spending limit of $500,000; From Tree Replacement Fund 3013, under the Mayor in conjunction with the Department of Public Works, a spending limit of $100,000; And under the Building Maintenance Fund, TV Determined, the Mayor in conjunction with the Director of Public Works, the spending limit, that being $200,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 25006, the Mayor FY25 Supplemental Appropriation Number Two, motion number one, or take up any action related there, too. This requires a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. I'm now going to refer to Counsel Berrika, the Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on Order 25006.
Thank you, President Ryan. The Committee of Ways and Means went on this specific item on May 13th, and again, we were sending it to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the mayor's staff that would like to speak on Order 25006, motion number one?
Good evening again. So, the motion that's before you was the first of several motions going back to early in the year, and what was packaged titled Supplemental Two, Fiscal '25 Supplemental Two. This motion was revised from its original filing, and just to note, the amount that's before the town council today is $300,000. Initially, we had filed a larger number. What this $300,000 funds is, having reached an agreement with Clean Harbors essentially regarding details that were performed in, up through July of 2023, 2020, sorry, beginning in July of '23, sorry, I got my dates wrong, and performed through the following May. There was a number of them, most had been disputed, and so we reached an agreement ultimately with Clean Harbors on an amount that they would pay. This amount would fund the difference of that net negotiated amount. In total, there were $542,000 in total invoices, so this would essentially clear an amount of $300,000, which includes, equates to roughly half of the bills plus the administrative fee that is typically charged on fire detail. This is an important and required piece of funding because the fire details are paid out of a separate fund. That's what this motion does, is transfer the funds, the $300,000, to that. In absence of this, this fund would have a deficient amount equal to that, the $300,000. In absence of that being funded, we would have to retain that amount of certified, of free cash withheld at the close of the year. So, it's an essential financing piece we have to do, given that we, at this time, know that those funds will be necessary to close that deficit. So, that's a quick summary. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Do any councils have any questions or comments? Counsel Reynolds.
I don't have a question, more of a comment. I believe that the current administration inherited this problem, and I do believe that what we had this evening earlier with the incorporation of a new leadership team at the Fire Department, if this team was in place, I believe, during this time period that we spoke of, we wouldn't have this problem. Gross negligence on the part of the previous fire chief and its finance department. This is no reflection upon the men and women of the Fire Department, but rather, the leadership of the Fire Department prior to the incorporation of, or the placement of Chief Fioa. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Counsel Berrika.
Thank you, President Ryan. I would just like to let folks know that, you know, and commend the committee members on the Committee of Ways and Means, especially Counselor Moran and Counselor Maglio. This was a several-month process to really understand what this supplemental, which means money that wasn't originally budgeted, that we now have to pay for and we didn't expect, where this came from, how we were handling it, what the solve was to go forward so this doesn't happen again, and I hope that my gratitude can relay a level of comfort to residents that counselors and committee members are taking our responsibility to shepherd your tax dollars with the utmost seriousness, and really making sure we understand where every dollar is spent, why, and how. And I also want to thank Chief Fioa and Ms. Lawless for multiple meetings, a level of data and reporting that was requested that I don't think they anticipated, but were graciously provided, and thank you for, I think this is a real collective effort working together to get us to where we are today, and close watchers of the council will see that this motion came before the council several months ago. So, thank you to all.
Thank you. Counsel Moran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would echo the Chair of Ways and Means's comments and that it was a collaborative effort of our committee to look at the request for supplemental budgets this year with heavy scrutiny. I would thank the mayor's office for their willingness to have a dialogue about the requests, the alternatives, manners in which the matters could be addressed, and the work from the town solicitor's office, the chief of staff, the director of finance, everyone that was involved in answering a lot of questions that we had, and a wide range of them, about the supplemental budget, and it was markedly reduced, I think, as a result of our effort. There will, you know, it will be some matter of reduction of free cash going forward because of how we're handling it, but I think it's appropriate that we didn't deplete all of our free cash because of this supplemental. I also want to echo again that because of the budgeting that has been done for the Fire Department in FY26, and the more realistic funding levels and estimates and controls that are in place, I don't think we'll be seeing the level of supplemental requests that we've seen in this year. And going forward, I think we'll see less use of free cash to address ongoing operational problems during a current fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the council? Counsel Maglio.
Thank you. I think that the, this was an important issue. It was an important exercise to go through, and I think it's important for people to understand that when you ask questions and when you dig deeper, and that's met with a level of transparency and effort that this was, that that's really important for the fiscal health of the town. Also, when it's, for people who like to speak up and to step forward, that's an important part of the process. In this particular situation, there was a lot of performative aspects to the idea that East Braintree was being kept safer because of the certain details that were taking place long after these details needed to take place. I mean, let's just name it. Questioning the status quo is not easy, but it's necessary, and I think this is an example of questioning, of due diligence, of research, and then also the ability to negotiate, just with, like with the lower settlement fees. I mean, the fact that we have less of a balance because of your office, the mayor's office, to negotiate a lot of this is really important, and that's what, when, you know, another level of collaboration is achieved, that's how we can, we can avoid these mistakes, and we can learn from them, and we can ensure that they don't happen again. And I agree with my fellow counselors that there have been a number of protections now that have been put in place, that we're not going to see this again, and I appreciate that because these are costly and expensive moves, and this is part of the cleanup that continues to happen. So, thank you very much for all of your hard work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, hearing none, any questions, comments from the general public? Okay, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Counsel Ringus with the motion.
Mr. President, I would move that the sum of $300,000 be transferred from fiscal year 2024 certified free cash to the Fire Department Details Fund, Fund 8910.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Okay. So, the next, we already did 25023. The next item after that is 25024, Mayor Establish Special Education Special Purpose Stabilization Fund or Take Up Any Action Related There, Too. This requires a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? I opposed. That's unanimous. Public hearing is now open. I'm going to refer to Counsel Berrika, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation on Order 25024.
Okay, staying consistent with the theme, this also was reviewed during our May budget hearings, and we are sending it to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the mayor's staff that would like to speak on 25024? Mike?
Logan.
Logan.
So, quickly, the motion that's before the council tonight will allow Braintree, like many communities, to establish a special, a special purpose stabilization fund, just as the motion says. In this case, for the purposes solely of funding unbudgeted and unforeseen increases within a fiscal year that the school district, the Braintree Public Schools, would face, particularly related to special education. The reason why this is so critical is because it's simply the nature of some of the services that may be required for the school district to be able to fulfill its mandate in providing services, appropriate levels of services for enrolled students that require them. They may see a substantial increase within the year, and the unfortunate consequence without other resources being available would be that the district would have to cut or essentially delay expenses from other special education or general education programs and services. Many communities have adopted this as a strategy and relied on it as a way to, again, smooth out those highly potentially variable costs that can't be anticipated fully, can't be budgeted for fully. This, the motion that's in front of you would establish a special purpose stabilization reserve, that's a mouthful, sorry, and therefore requires two-thirds of the council's approval. I would also further note that any appropriation, any funds that would be transferred from this fund will have to be brought back for the council for Ways and Means consideration further. This just establishes a vehicle to be funded and be for this purpose, and for us to set aside funds for this, but the use of it still would need to be proposed by the mayor to the town council for the use, and we would anticipate that that will be done transparently and in partnership with Braintree Public Schools, should it be the case that the funds are needed.
Thank you. Would any council member like to speak on Order 25024? Counsel Hume.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great idea, long overdue. Special education costs, my day is going back to school committee. We have our Superintendent Jim Lee, Chair of the School Committee, Lisa Heager, and our incoming Superintendent Tim McDonald all here. This is a fluctuating cost every year you can never plan for, you can't budget, you can't predict. And again, I'll go back to my school committee days with fellow Counselor Ringus, he heard the term FAP, Free, Fair, Appropriate Education, right, is what we all heard. Every child has a right to a free education. We live in Braintree, every student has a right to public education, whether these students are educated within our Braintree schools or outside in outplacement, and sometimes we don't have the services within the district to educate our students, and we have to send them out of district. This could be a huge benefit to that, and every kid has the right to be educated within Braintree or outside of Braintree as a Braintree resident. So, I am so grateful to the mayor for coming up with this. I'm sure the school department and school committee members will appreciate this because I know, as was mentioned earlier by previous speakers, when you're coming up with a school department budget, and any budget, but especially the children, it's like, what do you pick that they're not going to get to fund another program? And those are the, that's where we've been at over the years. So, fully supportive of this, commend again the mayor. Can't say enough about this. I'm so happy for this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Moran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy to see this included as part of our budget. It allows for a smoothing of spikes that may occur in special education spending that can be unpredictable or anomalous. It also allows, rather than having resources be competed for between general education and special education needs, it harmonizes them, and it will allow for a more transparent budgeting process that, so that less of a buffer will be, will have to be incorporated into the school budget for unanticipated special education expenditures. So, I'm happy to support this. I thank the mayor for adopting this idea and bringing it forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other members of the council have any questions, comments? Okay, I'm going to open up to the general public. Anyone from the general public that has any questions, comments, or would like to speak on this matter? You have to come up to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
I'm Mary Rose Antros, and of Cotton Ave. I just have one question. With this supplemental budget, this is only to deliver FAP, it's not for any legal fees incurred by the town?
Who would like to answer that question?
Thank you for that. So, just to be clear, so this, we do not anticipate this would include legal services allowable costs. It's not identified in the motion. It's not identified in the motion, but frankly, as a best practice, looking at other communities, there's very prescribed, the best practice we've seen is that other, the town and the school district agree to what, essentially what expenses would be essentially allowed under this, and then, of course, it's subject to the town council's approval. And that's typically in-state, out-of-state tuition. Braintree performs a lot of its special education services within the district, and so there might be other costs besides payments to, directly to care providers outside of the district, but it would not be anticipated to be for legal services specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the general public have any questions, comments, or would like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none, and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. And for the motion, Council Ringus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move with the town council vote pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40, Section 58, sorry, Section 5B, to create a special purpose stabilization fund for unbudgeted and unforeseen special education costs, to be known as the Special Education Special Purpose Stabilization Fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 25025. The mayor, increase maximum household senior work-off program amount or take up any action related thereto. This requires a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. I'm going to refer to Council Berica, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation, Order 25025.
Thank you, President Ryan. This, too, was reviewed by the Committee of Ways and Means during the month of May. The committee is sending it to the council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is anyone from the mayor's staff would like to speak on Order 25025?
Good evening again. I'm Mike Eswin, Finance Director. The motion that's in front of the council right, at the moment, is essentially the second time we've taken up this program in the less than 12 months. Members of the council may remember last August, subsequent, or simultaneous with us appropriating the override, supported additional funding. We also revisited this program, which had not been adjusted for some period of time, many years. And what this motion would do is, given, after we increased the program last year to cap it at 50,000 from 30,000, but also the household cap was increased to 1,500, having now seen within less than a year the program be fully subscribed. With the mayor's support, we are proposing to increase the program's caps again further from 1,500 to 2,000 per household, and from 50,000 to 75,000 for the total program. The program is funded essentially via the overlay surplus, and, but it is capped at the 75,000. It's administered by the, by Charmilla and the team at the Elder Affairs. And we've seen it as one, just one, but a key tool for households who, where one or multiple members are willing to, and interested in volunteering their time essentially to work off a portion of their annual property tax bills by working for the town essentially, and, and using their skills and talents after, you know, to continue to, to make those available, but now for the purposes of helping town business and operations. We received a number of good questions during the Ways and Means hearing that we will continue to endeavor to look at, and, and we'll continue to report back to the Ways and Means Committee about the, the progress as this increase unfolds, and as we see enrollment, any enrollment changes that may, that may occur. But, again, we feel it's a very valuable program to be able to offer. We're happy to bring ourselves more in line with the amount, the 2,000 cap that you see other communities having adopted. And, and it's a, it's a way for seniors in our community who are willing and want, interested in giving back their time, to be able to have a financial incentive, perhaps modest, given the, the total benefit, but as a way for them to recover some of the costs, some of the expenses they pay in their annual property taxes.
Thank you. I just want to say a couple of things. I want to thank the mayor and our staff for increasing this. When we talked about, you know, how additional taxes on people in the town and the most vulnerable people would be the seniors that live on a fixed income, the council, and in particular, Council Moran, I want to thank him for bringing this up. So, I'm very happy to see that we've made the progress with this. So, any councils have any questions or comments? Council Hume?
I know, I think we talked about this a while back. What is the outreach program to the seniors to tell them about this program? Because if they're not engaged in what's going on in town hall, they don't know about this program.
Yeah. So, essentially, the bulk of the outreach and awareness is through the council, the Department of Elder Affairs, through Charmilla's team. They do the intake essentially, and we have, at the mayor's direction, worked to try to also streamline that process, I should note, and continue to make it as streamlined as possible, because we're trying not to have it be essentially a gating issue for folks that would otherwise be interested. But the Department of Elder Affairs is the primary source of awareness and outreach. We do publish it as part of our tax programs and offerings for seniors. If they were to visit the webs, our website, we tried to put more information out during the tax recap last year in the fall. It is a very good question about how you can find different ways to get in, in front of people and make them aware of that. And this is still also a subset of, of the total population, because we do, the, the household still needs to be interested in working and, and be able to, and capable, able and capable of volunteering their time for this. So, there's, it's not the only program. We need to continue to make sure all seniors and veterans are able and aware of the other programs we have available for property tax relief, but it is one that will continue to look at how we can do more to sort of make folks aware at different, different places, not just in the digital world, but in, in ways that they might more traditionally interact with town government.
Yeah, if I can. And I, okay, so if they're not involved in the Elder Affairs Department, they don't hear about it. And there's many seniors who are not and are not connected. Would you consider doing a robocall or something? Can you target that age group at all in any way? Because I just, I, I think this is a wonderful program, fully supportive of it. It is great, and this is a population definitely could be vulnerable, and many need this. And again, even in our own council meetings, people aren't aware of things because they're not engaged on the website or, or emails and things like that, especially for the seniors. The more we can do, we have the electronic billboards, put it out there. Hey, call here for more information. I'm sure you would get more interest, and I know there's a limited amount of funds, and whether it goes to a lottery or what, but to expand this program and, and promote it as much as we can, I think would be even better than what, what we're doing. So, but I appreciate all the efforts. Thank you.
To build on that, if you want to give us an announcement that we could read at the council meetings, because maybe people watching the meeting at home could find out that way, so.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on this from the council? Council Moran?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mayor Joyce, for making the adjustments to this program. It's an important program. It is a good step, but there's more to be done, and I hope we get to a point where we can do tax relief that has been provided in other communities linked to the circuit breaker, which is the income tax relief that individuals can receive if their property taxes and utility bills reach a certain amount of, a certain percentage of, of their overall income. That, that measure could also be used for property tax relief, and has been done with special legislation in over 40 communities, and I'd like to see us get to the point where we could provide that relief as well. But this is a good interim step, and I appreciate the mayor's interest in providing additional relief to seniors.
Thank you. Any other councils have comments, questions? Okay, with that, any members of the general public wish to speak on Order 25025? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Council Ringus, we have the motion.
Mr. President, the town of Braintree Senior Work Off Program is authorized by Chapter 59, Section 5K of Massachusetts General Law, shall increase the annual household cap to reduce tax obligations to $2,000. Further, the amount of such reduced property tax obligations should not exceed $75,000 in fiscal year 2026. And further, that abatements under the Senior Work Off Program will be paid from the allowance for abatements and exemptions account.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 25026. The mayor, establish a building maintenance revolving fund or take up any action related thereto. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. I'm going to refer to Council Berica, Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for a recommendation, Order 25026.
Thank you, President Ryan. The Committee of Ways and Means also met on this item during our budget hearings, and we are sending it to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is anyone from the mayor's staff would like to speak on 25026? Mike, you don't have to say your name, we know who you are.
I think this is the last one, I promise. So, the motion that's in front of you is one I referenced earlier. Essentially, this establishes a revolving fund under the Department of Public Works, which we've proposed in the fiscal '26 budget for a cap of 200,000. This would be funded via license fees that, that the department will, will collect, and does collect currently, for the licensed use of our facilities, the facilities that they operate and maintain. We do, and really, the DPW does, make great efforts to maximize not only the use of the buildings for the community, organizations, residents, but also to maximize the return via fees, license fees, that they receive. It's a difficult task. Some of the organizations don't have large budgets, and we're trying, we've endeavored over the last 12 months to, to set a more consistent framework, a standardized license agreement, as best we can, a standardized licensing fee establishing process. Some of the usage is, is very temporary, some is for 12-month periods. But what this will essentially allow the department to do is to deposit those, those revenues into one single revolving fund, which is appropriated at that level, $200,000, and be, to be used for the very prescribed purposes that are set forward in the motion in front of the, the council tonight. Particularly, or I would just give emphasis, that's really for the maintenance and care of the facilities. So, we're talking about town and school facilities, which would include ordinary and, and special repairs and maintenance, as well as utility expenses that would be incurred by the department as, as you'd expect, because there's greater use of the town facilities that would otherwise occur without the license. So, this hopefully will, will read as a somewhat routine piece of business, but it, it goes a long way to help ensure that we have a consistent revenue source available to the Department of Public Works, and helps to incentivize them as they work to, again, standardize and grow this licensed revenue base as we move forward in '26.
Thank you. Would any council member like to speak on Order 25026? Council Hume?
President, I'm fully supportive of this one as well. As we all know, there's been maintenance issues in the past, and those could be catastrophic to a budget, and we've had some monumental expenses. I know Mike McGurney's here in the audience, he can attest to this, not only with our school buildings, but with our town buildings. So, this is creating some stability, so to speak, in the future. So supportive of this, commend the mayor. Everything we're hearing tonight is, is, you're building the tracks to stability for the town of Braintree and a well-thought-out budget and plan, and so, again, I'm supportive and appreciate all the work, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions, comments on this matter? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the general public. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to speak on Order 25026? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Council Ringus on the motion, please.
Mr. President, I move to amend municipal code 3.140.050 to include subsection K establishing the Building Maintenance Revolving Fund, which shall appear as follows. K, Building Maintenance Revolving Fund. One, fund name Building Maintenance Revolving Fund. Two, revenue. The town account shall establish the Building Maintenance Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund with the written concurrence of the mayor. All revenues associated with the non-exclusive licensing or similar use of facilities maintained by the Department of Public Works. All uncommitted balances of Fund 1004 and Fund 3009 as of June 30th, 2025, shall be transferred to the Building Maintenance Revolving Fund for the purpose established by the subsection three, purpose and expenditures. During each fiscal year, the Department of Public Works may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the fund to pay salaries and expenses, such as supplies, utilities, repairs, and improvements, and contractual services associated with the maintenance operation of the facilities. For fiscal years, the Building Maintenance Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years to begin on or after July 1, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Council Ringus, for reading all of those motions tonight. So, that concludes all business. So, do we have a motion to refer to the, do we have a motion to move all remaining items under new business to the respective committees?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. So, that concludes the business we have before us tonight. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, June 3rd, at 7:30 PM. I want to thank B-CAM for televising our meeting tonight, Bill Needham, Jerry Komic, and Dave Maybrook. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone.